Can we unmute? All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. It's 2:01 PM. My name is Ty Menzger, Chair of the Board. Commissioner Vice Chair Wayne Fournier, we expect to be joining us remotely for this meeting. We have Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and Commissioner Emily Klaus, as well as County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. We're going to start off today with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Edwards, if you join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Mejia, would you like to do a land acknowledgement?
Yes, sir. We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish people whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today, specifically the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Shaheilis people, our sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of the agenda, and my understanding is that there is a amendment that needs to be made. Can you outline that, Madam Clerk? Questions from the Board about the proposal to remove 9B from today's agenda. Is there a motion then to amend the agenda?
I have a clarifying question. 9B on my agenda is not related to that item. Is the number correct?
Make sure we all have the right agenda. I've got 9B, Johnson Point, Hawks Prairie, other groups. Okay. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Sheriff, can I just, sorry, I apologize. Do we want to maybe move the opportunity for the public to address the board before the presentation?
Yes, my understanding is a sheriff who will be kind of important to our proclamation is going to be here around 2:15, so that would be a second potential amendment that I would be fine with me.
Okay. Yes. So I would move to remove item 9B and move an opportunity for the public to address the board before our presentation today.
Is there a second? Okay, motion and second to make those two amendments to the proposed agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Umpused. Motion carries, and Commissioner Fournier is present just for the record. Okay, so that's the amendment agenda, so now we have an agenda to potentially approve. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Commissioner Mejia to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Umpused. Motion carries. We have an agenda as with two amendments. Okay, that takes us to opportunity for the public to address the board then. And the Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public at all public meetings. There are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. The general speaking guidelines are as follows. Please introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Please address the board, not audience or staff. Please silence your cell phones. Board does not respond to public comments directly. On an as-needed basis, the county manager may follow up with specific items. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes to address the board, and none of that time can be donated to other speakers. The board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature such as promotion of a for-profit business, or remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal. All written materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 RCW. So with those guidelines, I'm going to start with folks who have signed up. Anyone who's on Zoom will get called in order after we go through the folks who are in the boardroom. First up is Chris Roberts, and on deck is Larry Taylor. Chris Roberts, come forward.
Thank you. I'm Chris Roberts. I'm construction manager for Active Construction. I was going to make a comment on the Johnson Point project award, but it has been removed from the agenda. I'd like to thank you for doing that. We feel that the award to the apparent little bidder midway is not correct. There was errors with their bid documents. Our company has filed the TRO to prevent the award, and we'll hopefully have some further communications with this going forward. Again, we appreciate everybody's time here. We appreciate everything Thurston County does. We've had a lot of success with them in the past, and we hope to have more work with your county and your public works department in the future. So as I said, with that being removed from the agenda, I don't know that my statement is necessary at this point, and we'll look forward.
You're welcome to proceed. It's up to you.
Well, I guess, since I'm here, I'll read it. I'll try to be quick. Like I said, I'm the construction manager with Active Construction. There was on the agenda to award to it. Midway's bid was not, in our opinion, not responsive. There was errors with their bid documents, and they did not meet the disadvantaged enterprise requirements as required for the bid docs. Warning to the contract to Midway would violate the county's own bid docs, Washdott regulations regarding DBE requirements and Washington competitive bidding laws. Active was previously rejected on a different project for an issue that we pointed out with Midway's bid. Our issue here is we've been rejected, and now it's being awarded for a very similar issue. It's unfair bidding practices, and we just would like to see it all treated fairly and done equally. In March, we submitted a notice of bid protest for this bid, outlined three different issues. Midway's originally rejected, but on appeal, Washdott overturned the rejection and moved forward with the award. In the response received to our protest, they only addressed one of the three issues, which was a minor typographical error, but did not address the issue that we had previously been rejected on. We again sent in a following protest on April 26th. We have not received a proper response to that protest letter. We've only received a email stating that Washdott's decision is going to be upheld and moved forward. It has now been removed from your agenda, but we, like we said, we have now filed the TRO to prevent this, and we'll be continuing to pursue this. The board should not approve this decision if it does come up again, and we believe should be awarded to Active Construction as the second apparent little bidder. Again, we appreciate your time. We appreciate Thurston County and all the members of the public works department. We've done a lot of work with them and have always found them to be very fair and good to work with, and we look forward to moving this forward and coming to a good outcome. So I don't know if you have any questions of me, but again, appreciate everybody's time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you.
Is there any chance I could say something?
Sure.
Would you please keep us informed if there's issues as this thing kind of winds down?
Yes.
I think the bid process is very important to our constituents and those folks that are paying the bills, so we appreciate you stepping forward, bringing this to our attention.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that, and that's all we're looking for, is to ensure that the integrity of the bid process is held and that all projects are looked at equally. So thank you very much. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Larry Taylor with Jesse Simmons on deck.
Hello, I've been here a couple of times before. I'm Larry Taylor from the Hawks Prairie area, specifically Ridgeview 2. I'm here about the roundabout that's been being proposed at the Martin Way, Dootrow, and Meridian. So our first phase was a series of five letters plus a letter to the editor of the Olympian, and we presented that, and I presented the clerk copies of that. Our second phase is we went to a petition, and so just to show you, I showed this last time. We had a petition that's four pages in the back. Are there signature pages, but eight reasons why we're against this roundabout. We went around to businesses and homeowners, and we showed them what its current condition is and what the proposal is, and we stressed that there are 12 inbound lanes, six outbound lanes. We think it's way too big for a roundabout. So we've gathered 101 signatures, and so I will present these. And I also presented at the intercity transit meeting on 15th May, a rather lengthy oral presentation of why we're against this roundabout. So I'm not going to try to read it now, but I have a copy for the clerk, and I do ask that you take a look at it. Our next phase is to try to get some legislators involved that represent us, and this is a phase we'll start next, but we've already got quite a bit of attention as far as trying to stop this. So our ultimate objective would be for the Board of County Commissioners to say to intercity transit, "Our constituents have said this is a bad idea. We're listening. We agree." So we hope you will consider our cause. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for providing that to the clerk. Jesse Simmons is up. John Pettit on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jesse Simmons. I'm the Government Affairs Director for Olympia Master Builders. We represent about 500 members across five counties associated with the home building industry. Most of those members do live and work and do business here, right here in Thurston County. I'm here to speak about the proposed tree conversion code being presented today. We've been involved in the process from the beginning. It's been over a year-long process, and so the first thing I do want to say is, we really appreciate how staff has reached out to us and included us in the conversation. I cannot say enough about how hard staff has worked on this. This by no means is any critique of staff or anything like that. We simply have a couple of critiques to some recent changes to the code that we had worked on for about a year and about 40 stakeholders agreed on. So since then, a couple of things have been proposed, specifically in Section 17.27.400(c), the minimum of 30% of all landmark trees and 70% of all heritage trees on site are now required. Previously, that was also, what was included in that requirement was up to a minimum tree density of an average of about 100 trees per acre, which we were good with and we could deal with. Builders were amenable to that. By removing that tree minimum density standard and simply going with the trees on site, we do feel that it adds a layer of complexity to an already complex system, and any layer of complexity adds costs for the builder, which, as we all know, in the end adds cost for the home buyer or whoever the property owner is, or whoever that may be. The end cost will eventually go up, and at a time when we're hearing from everybody that we're in the middle of a housing crisis and we need more housing, it's not wise or not advisable to add costs to the end cost of a home or to the cost for buildings. There is a provision that has been proposed to be included that will kind of alleviate the worries about that, and that is the adaptive management provision, basically allowing for staff to go and the commission to go back and review how those standards are impacting development and whether they need to lower or raise those standards. And we do think that that's a good idea. We like that line of thinking. In a perfect world, we would actually support the opposite of what actually it says. Instead of the maximum standard of retention, you start with a lower standard of retention and raise it, you know, to what is acceptable, to what the builder can actually put on the land. And that way, they can add more trees than are required, and then in the end, if, you know, if that's the case consistently, you can actually raise that standard to what it needs to be. Yeah, just those couple of critiques, but as I said, staff has really included us in the conversation, as well as 40 other stakeholders, and we appreciate everything that staff has worked so hard on, so thank you.
I'm confused. Are you in favor of the ordinance as it exists right now?
So as it exists, we would be against the changes to that specific section that remove the 100 trees per acre average standard when it comes to retaining 30% of landmark trees and 70% of heritage trees. But overall, we're, I mean, we've agreed, like back in March when we had that, when you guys were presented with what we had come up with, we're definitely, we are supportive of that.
Thanks, sir. John Pettit's up. Vicki Lee's on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I have two different topics I'm going to try to approach in four minutes. First topic's going to be something you have on your agenda, which is agenda item number 5A, a bond resolution. You know, I'm going to bring forth, sometimes we go back in history a little bit, we realize that some things aren't a good idea. Well, 585 days ago, you went ahead and issued a bond for $50 million, and that particular one's costing you $6,274 a day in interest, and you haven't even used it. You haven't even decided what the project's going to be. $6,274 a day for interest on that bond. Now, today, you're proposing to do an approval for a $42 million bond at the same interest rate, which would equal $5,753 a day, and you haven't even got these projects on the capital facility plan, so you really can't proceed forward. I don't know. Maybe you guys think you get a credit card, you charge all the cash out of it, put it in the bank in your personal savings account, and then you pay 29% interest on the credit card while you're getting 2% interest on the cash that you put in the bank. It makes no sense. You can wait to get financing until such time that it's actually necessary, if it's even determined. There's a lot of process involved with going on a capital facility plan. I was listening earlier, and once again, some truths are only half-truths about whether maybe the sheriff's department has some element of being involved in the capital facility plan for land acquisition. But if you looked at your plan, you'd see that was only for $5 million, not $30 million. You need to turn that down, delay it, and go another direction. The second issue has to do with the hot issue of the week, or this last week. The state audit finally came in. Now, the state audit, well, I will tell you, I think they took it very easy on you. They made findings, and one of the main findings they wanted to make sure you do is the county needs to repay $1,855,201 to REIT One. Now, I'm going to just share with you a little something about when you have misappropriations. I'm sure that, I mean, Mr. Menzger's a lawyer. He knows all this. I could tell while he was talking to the audit team. RCW 364130, excess of expenditures liability. Expenditures made, liabilities incurred, or warrants issued in excess of any detailed budget appropriations, as revised by the RCW accordingly, are not the liability of the county, but of the official making or incurring such expenditure or issuing such warrant shall be liable therefore personally and upon his or her official bond. These were not proper or legal budget appropriations. Two commissioners here approved, on the voucher list, approved for the expenditure. You have a county, assistant county manager over there that integrated the entire thing. The way I read the law, and I know you're from Berkeley, you know, from a legal standpoint, but as I read the law, it's real simple. Each one of you that is participating in that decision is personally liable for the full amount, $1,855,000. I will look forward to your response. I think we maybe need to get the FBI in to do some further investigation. Thank you.
Vicki Lee, followed by Stephen Bernath.
Good morning. It's a late morning. I think it's afternoon. My name is Vicki Lee. I live off of Johnson Point Road in Thurston County. The building permit system is broken in Thurston County, and you know that. My husband and I requested a building permit, I always know when they're listening because their heads are down, a building permit for a pole building. I think we're on our third year now. We have complied with everything. We filed a notice of public, which I, as a practicing attorney of many years, drafted in accordance with the county ordinances and state law. We paid for the building permit that was cashed by the county in December, and yet, we've not received a permit. We've received nothing. No comments, no communication, no permit. How many other people are failing to receive legitimate building permits? I don't know, but I think there are a lot of them. Incidentally, if I ever get the permit, I will come back and let you know. Having listened to the prior testimony, I also want to let you know, having listened to this, that I fully and completely concur with Mr. Pettit's statements. He is correct in the law on this. You are, you do have personal responsibility. It is an awesome responsibility, and I hope that you will fulfill it. Do you have any questions? No. You never do. That's all right. Thank you. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your attention. I hope you have a good afternoon and make careful decisions.
Stephen Bernath on deck. Lynn Fitzhugh.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Stephen Bernath. I'm a retired forest hydrologist that worked in forest practices for over 30 years. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I just wanted to comment on the decision you're going to be making today, hopefully, to adopt the updated conversion ordinance. Really glad the county is updating the ordinance. The last legislative change that should have driven this was in the 2000s, so I'm glad you're finally getting to it. I've always appreciated the fact that the county was one of the first local entities to adopt a conversion ordinance in the 90s after the first conversion legislation was put in place. I recommend you adopt this ordinance, especially since you've added an adaptive management piece to it, so that you can review it in a timely fashion to see how it's being implemented and see if there are concerns. One concern I do have that's separate from the ordinance is there's been no talk of staffing to implement this ordinance. I believe that the county has been understaffed on conversions for many years, and I think especially with the forestry components more, being more technical this time around, it would be good for you to have a professional forester on staff. Finally, I'm excited about the fact the county is doing a canopy inventory. I know that some of you might be aware that the county has lost a lot of canopy in the last five years to development, and my concern, and I'm excited to work with you as the canopy inventory comes in and we see where we are, to take a look further at anything to do with retaining forest in the county, particularly since I live out in Northeast County and near the developments near 26th. If you've seen how they slicked off for both those developments, every last tree except for where there was wetlands, the stormwater problem they have now is just tremendous, and they haven't figured that out yet on either one of them. So I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Fitzhugh. Thank you. Next up is, uh, Lee, Lynn Fitzhugh, and John Toonheim is on deck. Prosecutor.
Lynn Fitzhugh with Thurston Friends of Trees. I live about a mile from here. Today is a big day for our county in potentially passing this tree conversion ordinance. Globally, we produce about 11 billion tons of greenhouse gases a year, and it is estimated that 5.8 billion tons are sequestered by trees, plants, and the ocean, with the greatest share of that being done by trees. It is estimated that tree preservation will sequester approximately 40% more than tree planting itself by 20100. This is why climate experts place a very big importance on not just afforestation, but especially on tree protection. While we work to reduce our emissions, it would be a big hole in the side of the boat if we significantly reduce our trees that are drawing down emissions. That is why the white paper done on trees for the county wound up commenting that tree protections were hugely significant. I want to thank the Commissioners who delayed this process, and Dana, uh, and Ashley, so that this could be tinkered with and gotten right. We went from having a very robust measure for tree replacement, but not enough tree protection, to, as it now, um, stands, a draft having 30% floor of preservation for landmark trees and 70% protection for heritage trees. I know some builders may feel unhappy about this, but honestly, it is still possible to clear the whole footprint of any and all buildings, and thus for development to go forward. We also appreciate the adaptive management standard that has been added into this. I think this also now places us first in the state for county tree protections. I would note that since the far majority of counties still have no tree protections, it is not hard to get into the top percent. But being first is something to be proud of. It is not simply some marker of environmental mindedness itself and estimable choice, but is more importantly, a marker of being a leader in fighting climate change. And that is something that all our children can appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. John Toonheim, and then Gary Whitley is on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to talk about one of the items on your consent agenda today, and that is a proclamation that you have issued proclaiming May to be Therapeutic Court Awareness Month in Thurston County. This is a new proclamation for the board. It's not one that you've done before, which is partly why it's on your consent agenda, because it didn't make it into the process in time. But next year, we'll make sure that that changes. It actually follows a proclamation by, uh, Governor Inslee, uh, this year, also proclaiming it to be therapeutic court month, uh, in Washington State. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments about our therapeutic courts to recognize, uh, how significant this is in Thurston County to our criminal justice programming. The first, uh, the first drug court, the first therapeutic court was a drug court, and interestingly enough, was started in Dade County, Florida, by then the district attorney, who was Janet Reno, uh, who went on to be the United States Attorney General. The chief presiding judge and the, uh, chief public defender got together and decided they wanted to create a different way of dealing with substance use disorder in the criminal justice system, and thus created the first drug court. That went on to spread across the United States. Now, drug courts are actually one of the most prevalent and most researched, um, criminal justice innovations, uh, really in modern history. In our own county, Thurston County, uh, well, Washington State was actually one of the leading states to get into this movement. Thurston County was one of the leading counties in the state to get into the movement. I think we had perhaps the third or fourth drug court, uh, created in, uh, the state in 1998. And, uh, there are literally hundreds of graduates now, uh, from our drug court. Uh, but in Thurston County, we weren't satisfied with just the drug court. We went on to create a mental health court, industry court, uh, veterans court, industry court, and a family treatment, uh, court. And so we now have four therapeutic courts operating in Thurston County, incredibly, uh, successful. As I said, this is one of the most researched, most successful innovations in perhaps criminal justice history, at least in modern history, as I framed it. Uh, there is, the national research is just incredible in terms of return on investment, uh, reaching almost $7 to every $1, uh, return on investment, uh, spent in a therapeutic court. Washington, our own state, uh, Institute of Public Policy and Department of Social and Health Services have, uh, both researched our Washington drug courts with similar findings. And while I focus my comments on drug court because that's where the research lies, all of the other therapeutic courts are following with similar research now building up. And so I just wanted to come here and make a comment, because this was on the consent agenda, I just wanted to make a comment in this portion of your agenda to, um, recognize all of the people in Thurston County that work in these courts, my staff, public defense staff, court staff, everybody that's working in these, uh, courts, uh, and, uh, to say thank you for this, uh, proclamation, and really to, uh, I think, uh, convey to the citizens how proud we should be of our therapeutic court programs here in Thurston County. Thank you.
It's Gary Toonheim. Okay. I'm going to ask Sheriff Sanders. My understanding is you may need to be, to deal with this proclamation and get back to what's going on in the community. Okay, I'm going to take the, um, there's a situation going on. We'd like to get, uh, the proclamation and Sheriff Sanders up, up front, center, and we will, there's a substantial amount of additional public comment we'll get right back to. But let's jump to that item on the agenda. This is a proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day, and we appreciate Sheriff Sanders being here to maybe provide a few comments, and we'll do the proclamation and, and, um, you know, I don't know, you're, you're the, you're the representative for your office. I know there's, there's stuff going on.
Yeah, it's just me today. Thank you for moving this up. We have a barricaded murder suspect that we're dealing with right now, so, um, I'm the only one that you're going to get today, uh, but how fitting, um, that our, our staff and other staff across the county are out dealing with a very dangerous situation, um, and we hope that that resolves itself peacefully. Um, but I appreciate the board taking the time, um, for remembrance of those who came before us and, and fell in the line of duty. Um, it's something that I think about often, right here in, in our own capital county is where the law enforcement memorial is. Um, so anyone is free to go stop by that, uh, by that memorial and see just how, how big that wall is and how the names continue to grow. Um, and thankfully, in recent years, we've seen kind of a dip in law enforcement fatalities. But again, it's, it's always seems to be something that, that rears its ugly head every once in a while, so I just wanted to take the time to appreciate the, the Board of County Commissioners for, for recognizing this publicly. Thank you.
Comments, objections from the board? If not, I'll have Commissioner Mejia go forward with the proclamation.
Thank you. Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, this date falls within National Police Week, May 9th through 15th, and recognizes our law enforcement officers and remembers those peace officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas Peace Officers Memorial Day is a collaborative effort of many organizations dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community and gives special recognition to those peace officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas it is known that every 57 hours an American law enforcement officer will be killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States, and 136 officers will be seriously assaulted in the performance of their duties, our community joins with other cities and counties to honor those who are noble peace officers everywhere. And whereas it is vital that we pay tribute to the law enforcement officers who have fallen in the line of duty and recognize their sacrifices, as well as the hardship and loss suffered by the families of those fallen officers. And whereas law enforcement officers strive to maintain a safe environment for all, often while facing significant challenges and dangers in our community recognizes the important work and sacrifices officers make each day to protect the citizens and property of Thurston County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims May 15th, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Thurston County, and encourages all residents to take part in honoring those peace officers who have lost their lives in the line of public service. Adopted this 21st day of May, 2024, the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you to the board, the public, and our county partners. We really appreciate it.
Okay. Let's jump back to our public comment. I think we were up to Gary Whitley. With, uh, on deck, might be Shailin, Shaylin Sowers. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Gary Whitley, and I live at 4035 116th Avenue Southeast in Olympia. I'm here today to speak about some of the false legal issues raised by Mr. Shibe in his May 14th letter to you. At future meetings, I will address other misinformation in his letter. Mr. Shibe claims that our steering committee is not in compliance with committee representation and does not have an elected advisory board. The facts are, our O L M D is 100% in compliance with state laws and county regulations. Administrative rules, Shibe quotes, were proposed but never adopted and have been replaced by the SOP that the B O C C recently approved. To review, oversight of L M Ds was shifted from public works to environmental health, and this has been working very well, thanks to Stuart Whitford and Rob Gelder's leadership. There are no current state or county election requirements for steering committee members. However, we have continually sought community-wide representation through our public meetings, mailings to all residents, emails, newsletters, word of mouth, and on our website over the last two and a half years. And we recently expanded our steering committee to nine members. The three newest members volunteered to join our committee by completing a publicly available online application that was on our website. Mr. Shibe falsely claims that L M D members cannot speak in our meetings without prior written notice and is concerned that the public cannot vote on issues before the steering committee. This is simply not true. We have continually encouraged people to participate in our meetings. To date, no one, not even Mr. Shibe, has even attended any of our monthly public meetings. The Zoom link is permanently on our homepage, and the meeting schedule and agendas are published in advance in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Our charter, page 7, section B, says, quote, "The chair, co-chair may limit visitors or groups of visitors to a maximum of three minutes of presentation testimony at the open public period of the regular meetings." Our charter is published on the document page of our website. In our monthly meetings, we have a public comments section. To date, no one has attended any of our public meetings. Our public comments guidelines are similar to the B O C C guidelines and are also published on our website. We have always believed that public input and involvement is extremely important and have encouraged it in all our media and in-person and public Zoom meetings. For examples of public communication, I ask you to look at the two handouts, which are stapled together that I distributed. The vertical page shows a screenshot of our homepage with the monthly steering committee Zoom link, the meeting schedule for the next three months, and a way to sign up to receive our newsletters. The back of that vertical page shows our documents page on the website, where we post documents for public access, viewing, or downloading in accordance with the O P M. The other landscape document shows the news page of our website. On the opposite of that, you, opposite side of that, you will see a page called Local Highlights that promotes community resources. Lastly, on May 17th, we both emailed and left a phone message to Mr. Shibe requesting a meeting to discuss his concerns. He has not yet responded. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you. Shaylin Sowers, with Diane Pearlman on deck.
Good afternoon. My name is Shaylin Sowers. I'm the Behavior Health Fund Program Manager for Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, and I'm here on behalf of the Treatment Sales Tax, T S T Advisory Committee to speak on the Proclamation for the Therapeutic Courts Awareness Month. So, Treatment Sales Tax, as you know, is a 1/10th of 1% sales tax enacted in 2009 to increase funding for mental health and substance use and therapeutic court programs and services in Thurston County. And T S T has gotten to support all four therapeutic courts here in Thurston County, and it's been an honor to work with them. So I just wanted to make sure that, um, on behalf of the advisory committee, we wanted to thank all the staff whose, uh, efforts are making the operation of the therapeutic courts, uh, possible, and also to thank them for their continuous efforts in making lasting impacts on the lives of those that they serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaylin. Diane Pearlman. On deck is Judge, oh, we got Judge Kinder from Zoom, he's signed up, so we'll shoot to him so he can get back to work. Go ahead, Ms. Pearlman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Diane Pearlman, and I live at 4035 116th Avenue Southeast in Olympia. I wanted to continue speaking about the letter that was received by our, to our steering committee from Mr. Shibe and the false legal allocations that he made. So it is clearly understa- let's see. I have met, let's see, sorry, I'm a little nervous. I want to speak on the two incorrect statements. One, the use of the weighted vote, and the second on the claim that all the goals of the L M D have been met, and so therefore it could be dissolved. It is clearly understandable, if anyone is a bit confused about the rules in effect and when they were in effect. One of the challenges of the last two and a half years of forming an L M D was the changing guidelines of formation. And, for example, when we began exploring formation, the administrative rules didn't even exist. And after several months, we heard of them, and then they were in draft form and had never been formally adopted. Then all of a sudden, in the spring of '22, just as we had initially approval of our petition and were planning public signing events, we were told that the administrative rules had to be attached to our, our petition, which we did. In the following months that were, that came, there was, um, oh, then was the SOP, the Standard Operating Procedures, were put in place, and a quote from Exhibit 1 in Mr. Shibe's, uh, letter is that he referenced the administrative rules, which are no longer in existence and were never officially adopted by the B O C C. So Claim 1 calls in the question of the weighted vote. Mr. Shibe quoted, "Weighted votes in the formation of O L M D 24 is unprecedented and highly questionable." The fact is, the weighted vote, one vote per dollar of assessment, is a state law and has been in existence since 1985, and there are currently 25 L M Ds in the state of Washington. So there is much precedence for this. The second claim that we're refuting is that the goals of the L M D have been sufficiently met so that the L M D could be dissolved, and that's in the R C W, in that part of the, um, ability to dissolve an L M D. And so Mr. Shibe's claim, the primary intent and purpose of forming L M D 24, has been fulfilled and satisfied. He claims that our goal is only the eradication of one specific weed. This is factually incorrect. Our goals were established early on during the public meetings. The goals have been, not been met and couldn't be because we just formed. Our goals as stated in our petition that you can find, are stated in our petition that you can find on our website. I won't take time to read them, but there are five goals. In closing, if Mr. Shibe had come and had a conversation with us, or asked questions, or come to any of the public meetings we had early on, or any of our steering committing, committee meetings, he wouldn't have had the questions that he raises in the petition. And what he would have known is that, as I know you know, that the standard operating procedures replaced the administrative rules, so quoting an administrative rule has no merit. The weighted vote in the state law has 39 years of precedent. And finally, that O L M D has never advocated, our O L M D has never advocated for the use of chemicals, as he implies in his petition. And we would not have to be here using time on your agenda. And we would not have to be here using time on your agenda if he had reached out to us. Thanks for your time.
Judge Kinder, you are next up.
Thank you. I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for having the proclamation about therapeutic courts. We are really fortunate in our county because we have your support. Our Superior Court programs include the DUI Drug Court, the Family Recovery Court, working with families through the Child Welfare System, and Safe Babies Court. Our District Court has Mental Health Court and Veterans Court. Thurston County has been a leader since the first DUI Drug Court in our county, which was nineteen ninety-eight. And I just wanted to appreciate all of you because you have supported these programs. You have found them to be beneficial, and they are. And I think that's the exciting thing, that when we look at, so much of the time, I think people are frustrated with the system and they try to think of ways to make things work better. These therapeutic courts do that. They break generational cycles. They give people a real opportunity to change. And like I tell the people that are in DUI Drug Court all the time, is what we want to see them become is someone that is able to have a good job, be able to be a good parent, be a good family member, that, to be a good neighbor, coworker. And we see time and time again that people are able to be successful. And that, I want to give thanks to you all because without your support, we would not be able to do these things in the court. And so thank you. And thank you for acknowledging the proclamation. I thought the Governor's proclamation, which I know the counties is very similar, it really hit a lot of those points and about how studied these programs have been and how successful they are. And so I think we have a lot to be proud of. So thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Next up, Bethany Davis, and on deck is Marcia Lynn.
Hello, I'm Bethany Davis. I am a resident of Thurston County over in the Hawks Prairie area, Ridgeview Two neighborhood. Why are we so concerned about this roundabout going in? We've lived here about a year and a half, it'll be two years in July. And it is difficult to exit our neighborhood at the primary entrance exit point onto Martin Way, both directions. We have to wait for the stoplight to give us a break in traffic to go right. It is very, very difficult to turn left during frequent times of day, including rush hours in the morning, in the afternoon. We get all of the J B L M traffic, people going there and back off of that exit one fourteen or the Brown Farm Road on ramp. It's a lot of traffic. It's fifty-five zero miles per hour past our entryway, both directions, until you get to the stoplight at the intersection in question, which is the Martin Way and Deuterow Meridian. Changing that intersection into a roundabout is going to dramatically affect the commutes of over a thousand residents of homes, or I'm sorry, residents of over a thousand homes in that surrounding area. I encourage you to look at Google Maps to see the actual residential build there and also apartments. So we did notice that there is a traffic counter on the exit one fourteen showing, you know, the number of cars exiting right there. We would encourage looking at the traffic at the intersection itself at the different times of day, including when schools let out. Pickup drop-off from schools is a big, busy time at that intersection as well. For our specific community, people from several surrounding communities use Ridgeview Road coming through as a shortcut to and from the freeway. It's a twenty-five mile an hour road with coming up on four roundabouts. We currently have three. We're going to be adding a fourth. There is a new development going in, in our community, so sixty-five additional homes and another sixty-five additional homes on that corner of Martin and Deuterow that are being built. So any traffic studies being done right now need to take into consideration the additional homes being built and all of the homeowners and their commutes, as well as the apartments that are going in where the giant crane is. I understand the, that the base of that, the ground floor, ground level is going to be businesses, but that they're also adding apartments there. So from all of that surrounding intersection, there are a great deal of homes, a great deal of apartments, a great deal of renters that all will be affected on their daily commute. We're talking about thousands of cars per day, including semi-trucks off the freeway. So just please take this into consideration. We understand there's a vote on June sixth. We're going to do everything within our power to call attention to the dangers of that. Just increased accidents, if anybody is severely injured or dies in this roundabout, that's a problem. That's a problem. We, we ask for more careful consideration. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you hang on? Ma'am? Commissioner Edwards has a question.
Would you clarify, you said, "We're taking a vote June sixth?"
Not you. Inner-city transit.
Oh.
Inner-city transit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Marcia, come on up.
Good afternoon. I'm Marcia Lim.
Lim.
And I'm here today just to echo. I also live in the Ridgeview Two area, in Hawks Prairie area. And the roundabout on Martin Way and Deuterow is going to cause a lot of traffic issues. There are, as Bethany mentioned, already in place, several backups that occur multiple times in the year related. And I think that the stoplights right now time it so that there is some time to get in and out of our subdivisions and for traffic to flow. But I know when I head to work, the traffic can be backed up at the base on Brown Road and Martin Way already to, especially if the interstate's backed up, taking a very timely process to get to and from that exit. And I feel that the roundabout is only going to cause that to be increased. I would kindly ask you to weigh in and represent us as inner city meets with that vote on whether to proceed with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lim. That's the end of my written list for folks in the boardroom. Is there anyone in the boardroom who didn't get a chance to sign up but did want to provide public comment? Mr. Trowbridge.
Brett Trowbridge, Patterson Lake. I've got a proposal or an offer to give you today. What do you benefit if you accept it? You never have to listen to me again. And I'm willing to pay my fees, which are roughly two thousand a year or about twenty thousand over ten years. And all I'm asking you to do is to leave out my properties from the treatment. So again, I have two Vs that go out into the lake. One is the five hundred feet of lily pads that wasn't even included in the, impossible for me to believe there's any rationale for why I should be treated there. But that's five hundred feet. I want it to go out one football field into the lake. We've been over this many times. That's roughly about three acres, five hundred by three hundred feet off the lily pads. Then I have five contiguous properties that together are about four hundred feet. So there I want four hundred feet by a football field, four hundred by three hundred. That's roughly two acres. So I'm asking for five acres out of a two hundred and seventy-two acre lake be excluded from treatment. Hardly a large amount. Nine hundred feet out of nineteen thousand feet of waterfront. And you know the reasons I'm asking for this. I don't have time to go into them again, except that we own the bottom of the lake. You don't. And you left thirteen properties out. It's funny, that didn't happen on Offutt Lake. You didn't leave any out. And you have conservation districts on Offutt Lake, but no, we can't have that at Patterson Lake. So I'm offering this. Why don't you accept it? Because otherwise, what's going to happen is that a man called Sean Ultican, remember our conversation about him, Commissioner Mejia? He's the person who approves treatments on lakes under L M Ds. He's in DOE. His last name is spelled U L T I C A N. And he's a good friend of Mr. Whitford, who are quite acquainted with him. He's, he's an aquatic pesticides permit specialist, but he also approves bottom screening, harvesting, all of the treatments that are being considered except for the ALD treatment. He doesn't do those. So I talked to him two years ago. I talked about it with the Board. He said that when he gets a proposal, he has to determine whether or not the people proposing it actually have jurisdiction. And he told me on the phone a couple of weeks ago that if all properties weren't included, there would certainly be an issue as to jurisdiction. And if the bottom of the lake is not owned by Department of Natural Resources, but is actually owned by the owners, which my case establishes, State B Kelly, then that would be a reason to send it back to you guys for you to say what properties are going to be included. The way he put it was, you'd have to draw a map. So when is this going to happen? A year and a half from now. I don't want this whole thing to be postponed. It's seeming to me that you do if you're going to say that Herrera, Inc. is going to decide which properties are going to be included. I urge you to vote no. Commissioner Klaus, Commissioner Fournier, are you there? You need to vote no on June, on June third, when the, Mr. Whitford comes here and says he wants you to sign up for this thing because it's not clear whether it includes all properties on the lake or whether the thirteen properties, which are all the swampy parts of the lake along the railroad track, where the exit stream is, and over in the south end where my lily pads are, all of those people were left out. So either all those properties can't be treated, under my view, or they all have to be treated even though they weren't included in the thing. And I guess you could ask permission from them, but I'm not giving it. So the question that you need to answer is, are we going to approve that properties that weren't included can be treated against the will of the owners? That's the question you need to decide. Otherwise, we're going to be back here in a year and a half, and I'm going to be saying, "I told you so." You're going to have to make a decision about this. Please do it. And I'm against borrowing forty-two million dollars.
Anyone else in the boardroom? We have a number of folks on Zoom, many of whom are staff, but can, can County Manager, Assistant County Manager, I can't read some of the smaller names.
Sure.
Go through if there's anybody that's here for public comment.
The other one we don't recognize is Teresa Jennings.
Ms. Jennings, are you here for public comment?
No, I am not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I think that concludes public comment. Thanks, everybody, for coming forward. And County Manager, an update after any time?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just two quick updates. I'd like to start by recognizing our Public Works Department. The County Road Administration Board certified a good practice. It results in best practice of the highest standards that Public Works continually exemplifies. They won an award. They have a certificate here. And we'd like to just draw recognition to the Public Works team. I know that Matt Oldman's here. I don't know if you have any comments you'd like to make about this award.
I know it just looks like a piece of paper, but this piece of paper is a ton of work by a lot of people on the Public Works staff team. I want to particularly call out efforts that are performed by Mr. Steve Bricker, by Becky Kahn and our traffic engineering group, Doug Kurler, our Sheriff's Office, Bruce and Fleet helps a lot. So this is, it's a public works effort, but really is a county effort too. And it's significant because what this means is that we're allowed to continue to receive five to six million dollars of state gas tax money each year, which goes a long ways. And then in addition to that five to six million of state gas tax, we're also given some additional funding that allows us to perform more than a half million dollars worth of roadway prep work for our preservation projects as well. So kudos to the whole team. It's a, it's a, an accomplishment. But it's an accomplishment that we have to continue to get if we want to continue to get that five to six million dollars each year. Commissioner Mejia is on the Crab Board, so thanks for lobbying for us and.
What is Crab Board?
Yeah.
What is it?
Uh, County Road Administration Board. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then one more.
That, that certificate is not a guarantee. And there are some counties that only got a conditional certificate, but they're on a thin, thin ice. And it always makes me very proud as a Thurston County representative that, you know, anytime Thurston County comes up, we're never on that list. We're never on a conditional certificate. It's always, we have done our job. So really, thank you so much to Public Works staff for all of their work to really earn that good standing.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And Chair, one more, as was mentioned, about our Fleet Department. The National Association of Fleet Administrators, N A F A, awards a hundred best fleets every year. And we'd like to congratulate our Fleet Services Manager, Bruce, and his team for their hard work. They placed eighty-two on that list. And when you think of all the fleet, yeah, we can round with applause. And when you think of all the fleets represented by municipalities in the nation, how many municipalities that represents, how many fleets that represents, the fact that we're placing eighty-two in a nationwide assessment goes to the hard work, innovation, dedication that Bruce and his whole team exemplifies. And so Bruce, last time we called you out, you turned a shade of pink. And so if you're comfortable just standing and raising your hand, otherwise you can come and make a few comments if you'd like.
Bruce Fleet Services Manager. I'm accompanied here by Doug Baldwin and Danny Beard, two of the shop crew chiefs. This is really a testament to the, the hard work and dedication of all the fleet staff and their commitment to serving the customers who go out and serve the public.
Thank you so much, Bruce.
Thank you.
Okay, before we jump into the business items, the Board would like to provide a special recognition as well. You heard a little bit about it during public comment from some of our leaders, the prosecuting attorney, the presiding judge's pure court. But we would like to acknowledge Therapeutic Court Awareness Month. It's a proclamation that's been signed by the Board and will be adopted on our consent agenda. In honor of National Therapeutic Court Awareness Month, I would like to acknowledge the pivotal role drug courts and therapeutic courts play by fostering recovery and family stability. Twenty-six years ago, Thurston County implemented our first therapeutic court, offering a lifeline for individuals navigating the legal system towards rehabilitation and reintegration. With our specialized courts like DUI Drug Court, Family Recovery Court, Mental Health Court, and Veterans Court, communities unite to tackle substance abuse issues, emphasizing personalized treatment and community well-being. By breaking the cycle of substance use and legal entanglements, therapeutic courts not only improve individual health, but also foster a safer, more resilient community, proving that compassionate policies yield profound societal benefits. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we thank the professionals who work in the courts for your efforts and the impact it has on our community. The Board has included a proclamation formally recognizing Therapeutic Court Awareness Month on today's consent agenda. So thank you. And with that, let's move to our consent agenda. We have items three A through three P. Is there any request from a commissioner to remove an item from consent? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve consent items A through P. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items consent three A through three P. Non-debatable motion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Three A through three P are approved. And that takes us to four A, Central Services Item. Purchase of new dishwasher for Thurston County Corrections Center. Jason Ash from Central Services is going to give us a, going to brief the Board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Ash, Facilities Manager. I'm here this afternoon to ask for approval to move forward with the purchase of a new dishwasher for the corrections facility. As I spoke about this morning, it was vetted through the state contract, and Edward Dawn and Company came in with the lowest bid. And I'm here if you have any more questions.
Any questions for Jason? Not hearing any. Is there a motion?
I'll do it if you want. I move to approve the purchase and installation of a commercial dishwasher from Edward Dawn and Company for the amount of $112,025.16. And authorize the-- and authorize the Central Services Director to execute the contract and any future amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the purchase of the commercial dishwasher. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any votes? Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. 5A, under Commissioner's Office, bond resolution for acquisition of remodeling of various county facilities. Assistant County Manager Campbell, are you presenting this?
I am, thank you.
Okay.
So this resolution enables the issue of up to $42 million in general obligation bonds. The proceeds would be used for a building for sheriff law enforcement, the remodel of the election's ballot processing center at Motman, and an update of the security controls at the family and juvenile court. This allows for the issue of the bonds. The county is not obligated to issue these bonds and could decide not to at a later date, but this resolution allows for the expeditious issue of those bonds. And we are currently planning for the bond sale for the fall when we think we will need the funds. The earliest date that we might issue these bonds is on September 26th, and we rely on the advice of our bond advisor and bond counsel to determine the actual date of the sale based on interest rates and the interest in-- from the buyers of these types of bonds. And the team that has worked on this resolution involves Commissioner's Office, the budget team, the treasurer and his staff, the auditor and her staff, as well as our county bond advisor and our bond counsel. And I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Gadman, our county treasurer, to say a few words about the financial committee-- Finance Committee.
Thank you. It's on?
Treasurer and Chair of the Finance Committee.
Yes.
Yes, it's on. You're good.
Finance Committee is created in statute and establishes the county treasurer's chair, county auditor's vice chair, and the chair of the legislative authority, which is Commissioner Mentor this year as a member. And the charge that the Finance Committee has is to create the debt policy for the county, which our debt policy has been certified by WPTA, the Washington Public Treasurers Association. And within that debt policy, there's-- it specifies that the draft bond resolution be sent to the Finance Committee for review. Finance Committee's total commitment here is just to check to see if the bond resolution complies with the county debt policy. Type of bond, is it within the debt ceiling? Are the terms going to be favorable to the county? Has nothing to do with the content of the resolution other than those items. And the Finance Committee did their review last month and are recommending that the bond resolution move forward. And we're recommending that the county commission pass this resolution. And that's all I got.
Questions for the treasurer?
I do have a question. I heard something from the Assistant County Manager of Interest that you may go out for the total 42-- up to the 42 is the way I took that. Does that mean that you could go out for 22 if you felt necessary? And then we would only have the interest on $22,000?
Yes.
Initially, and then incrementally go out?
We could break this into separate issues. There is an economy of scale in issuing bonds because there are a lot of process-related expenses. But we could break it down into separate bond issues if the board so choose to do that. We are structuring this particular bond. The intent is to structure it so that the portion that would be used for the sheriff's building would be a 20-year bond. The portion that's used for the remodel for Motman and the FJC would be 10-year bond. You can structure it that way in a single issue. So we've been working with our bond advisors on that. I would also mention that the payment source for the bonds for the sheriff's law enforcement is the public safety sales tax for law. For the processing center is the public safety sales tax on the justice side. And both of those were included in the Proposition 1 that the voters approved. So this was part of the intent of the new tax.
I know we're not at discussion yet, so I don't know if you want me to-- can I follow up on that?
Sure.
I guess what I've heard just now is new information for me, but I'm not on the committee with Jeff. And whatever I feel about this, I want you to know, sir, that it has nothing to do with you. It's some concerns I have on how the county is doing business. We recently had an audit, had some questions. And I know that this morning at our work session, this was not unanimously moved forward. And I think others had some concerns. So with this new information, I think it probably doubles my concern that we need a little more time to review this. But the democratic process will take place.
What is the new information that you're referring to?
The stuff that the Assistant County Managers just laid out, that we wouldn't have to go out for all of it. We could do part of it, depending on what projects. I was kind of under the understanding that if we didn't do this now at 42, we couldn't do some of the other things. So just issues of process. So I just expressed my concern about that. So thank you.
Sure. Any other questions for Jeff or Robin, Treasurer or Assistant County Manager? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the resolution providing the issuance, sell, and delivery of not to exceed $42 million aggregate principal amount of limited tax general obligation bonds necessary to finance the acquisition and remodeling of a building to house the county sheriff's law enforcement office and related services, the remodeling and renovation of the county's ballot processing center, improving the juvenile jail, and the acquisition, construction, and or remodeling of other associated infrastructure or capital improvements to make the buildings useful for county services and uses, and authorize the Assistant County Manager of Internal Services as the designated representative to approve the final terms.
Is there a second? A motion and a second to approve a bond resolution? Discussion on the motion. Commissioner Edwards.
I guess I would just reiterate the fact that I do feel there's no reason, really, not to have more information for discussion on this topic. I mean, it's a lot of money. Even if we don't go out for the whole amount, just having the understanding of what we could or could not do seems more responsible, especially in light of some criticism from the state auditor's office yesterday. So that's my position. Thank you, sir.
So my comment is that the two primary projects related to this both have a time sensitivity. One is the election center, and we have a presidential election coming up. And we've been working super hard to try to get the election security and election center ready for that election. And we're still on track to do that. Second is the dovetailing with the renovations that are being done at the courthouse complex, which is going to require the sheriff's office offices there to move to other space. And that was embedded within Proposition 1, which voters approved. So it makes sense to move forward with these bonds. The funding source for those two major pieces of the project are the public safety tax. As the Assistant County Manager-- if she didn't say that, I was going to make sure we said that, which is that this was a separately approved funding source that was approved by the voters. We proposed it, and the voters approved it. So voters have asked us to move forward on election security and the associated infrastructure with the additional staffing for the sheriff's office. So to me, this is just part of that process, moving it forward. And there is a time sensitivity on both of those. So I'm in support of the resolution. Any other discussion?
I have a couple of things.
Yes, Commissioner Klaus.
So as my senior Commissioner Edwards mentioned, this morning, moving this forward on today's agenda was not entirely unanimous, although I do respect the democratic process. This is another instance in which I would appreciate more time. This is a huge amount of money. And although it's a ceiling, which I understand, we don't need to spend all of it. We did discuss a number of options, such as breaking them out into separate bonds, which I understand after this morning would increase the interest rates. But it was unclear how much. I'm still waiting for those numbers to come back. And I'm trying to fully wrap my mind around the financial implications of this. I also have meetings later this week with budget staff to really understand what this would do. And as a new commissioner, I don't want to see myself in a situation similar to what we're facing now with the audit finding that just came before us. So due to those reasons, I would like more time. It was brought up this morning that if we were to push this out, then it wouldn't be able to be approved until our next meeting on June 4th. So I guess a question for whoever could answer it would be-- I know it's time-sensitive, and I'm not negating the need for these projects. We know we need a new sheriff's building. We need the Motman complex to be fixed, and we need the FJC improvements. But if we were to push this to the June 4th meeting, would that negatively impact the timeline of those projects in any significant way by pushing out two weeks?
So we have a timeline from our bond advisors. If you push out the adoption of the resolution, it will push out the issue of the bonds by two weeks or however long the board should choose.
Would that have a detrimental impact on the projects? Or would it just simply be like a two-week delay to allow for myself and any other commissioners to gather the additional information we've asked for?
It's going to depend on when we need the proceeds.
Okay.
So we are in the middle right now of the improvements for the ballot processing center. The board has been having conversations about the purchase of the building. Should we need the money before we issue the bonds? Then we would be seeking through the board to do an interfund loan, which also comes with interest rates, so that we've got the cash to be able to do these projects.
Commissioner Edwards.
Actually, the Assistant County Manager covered mine about the interfund loan. So thank you.
Okay. Any other points of discussion? I will-- I will not take this as board discussion, sir. I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Extinctions?
Stain.
Okay, so that motion carries. 3, 1, with one extension. We'll move to item 5B. Council on Racial Equity and Inclusion Proposed Bylaws. D.V. Ogden, Racial Equity Program Manager, to brief the board.
Hello, my name is D.V. Ogden. I serve as the county's Racial Equity Program Manager. And I am here seeking your approval of the bylaws for the Council on Racial Equity and Inclusion. Just some quick background. The council had been established, I believe, since the winter of 2021. Just due to unforeseen circumstances and challenges that the council was navigating, there were delays in crafting the bylaws. As of April 12th, 2024, the council voted unanimously to approve the bylaws and recommend them to you all for adoption. The bylaws outline the responsibilities of the council, taken largely from Resolution 16097-- excuse me, which established the council. And then also outlined in the bylaws are professional expectations, roles of the members, and the appointment process. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for D.V. on the bylaws? Nope. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve and adopt bylaws for the Council on Racial Equity and Inclusion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve and adopt bylaws for the Racial Equity and Inclusion Council. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. I would just, again, like to show my appreciation for D.V. and all the hard work that went into getting these bylaws together, as well as the council. And I know it's hard work putting bylaws together, and there's a lot of discussion that goes into it. So just very appreciative that we're now at this step.
Thank you.
I also would just like to echo Commissioner Mejia's points. I know, D.V., you've worked really hard, along with your council, to put these bylaws together. And I just wanted to thank you for all the work you've put into it. And every time we take another step in the right direction to support your work, I think that we're making really important progress. So thank you so much for everything you do for the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to go. So did I call for the vote yet?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? She carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Sure, I'm on track here. 5C. Setting a public hearing for telecommunications franchise agreement. And Nicole Martinez, Budget and Fiscal Manager, to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nicole Martinez, Budget and Fiscal Manager. I'm here today to present Zipley Fiber Pacific. They are looking to go for a non-exclusive franchise agreement with the county. I am looking to set the public hearing for June 18th. And that is to operate and maintain fiber-optic telecommunication lines and system facilities within Thurston County's right-of-ways for the purpose of providing telecommunication services. Zipley does not currently have any facilities in the county right-of-ways. The company intends to build a network throughout the unincorporated parts of the county, beginning with areas adjacent to Olympia, Lacey, and Tom Water. The proposed franchise is very similar to other telecommunications franchises that the county has entered into, and it is for a term of 10 years. If you have any questions?
Questions for Nicole? Nope. Okay, is there a motion?
No. I would move to set a public hearing on June 18th, 2024, at 3:30 p.m. or assume thereafter, as the matter may be heard, in Room 110 of the atrium, 3,000 Pacific Avenue Southeast, to consider the application for a non-exclusive franchise to Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC, doing business as Zipley Fiber, to construct, operate, and maintain of fiber-optic telecommunication lines and system facilities in Thurston County.
Sorry. Motion's been made and seconded to set the public hearing for the franchise agreement with Zipley Fiber. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Community Planning and Economic Development is next. Interlocal Agreement. Amendment for voluntary stewardship program. Item 6A, Andrew Defoe, Senior Planner, to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrew Defoe, Senior Planner with Community Planning, standing in for Kevin Jensen, Ag Community Program Manager. This item is an amendment to the interlocal agreement with Thurston Conservation District to complete technical assistance for the voluntary stewardship program. The amendment is necessary to add $140,375 to the budget to accommodate additional pass-through funds received from the State Conservation Commission for cost-share projects. These cost-share projects fund best management practices, such as manure storage facilities and exclusionary fencing on our local farms to help protect water quality. This amendment will increase the total pass-through compensation amount to $782,906.25. The current interlocal agreement is funded entirely by State Conservation Commission contract funds approved by the Board of County Commissioners on November 7th, 2023. Staff is requesting that the Commissioners approve this amendment and authorize the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development to execute the agreement and any amendments that extend the agreement up to one year and do not exceed the total amount by 10%. That concludes my remarks. Take any questions you may have.
I'm curious, do we-- I can't remember if we covered this this morning, but is this money because they've got extra money? Or we used up the money that we used?
Or-- It sounds like the state had additional funds that were made available through a second call for bids, and we were successful in getting--
and we were successful in getting them.
We were able to show that we could use those money, those funds.
Correct.
And I think it also shows we have a past history of doing a good job.
Okay, any other questions for Andy? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve an amendment to the volunteer stewardship program interlocal agreement with Thurston Conservation District to accommodate an additional $140,375 for state conservation commission-funded cost-share projects for the period of April 9th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and authorize the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development to execute the amendment and any amendments that extend the agreement up to one year and does not exceed the total amount by 10%.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the amendment to the voluntary stewardship program, I L A. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fornier for the record? Is that a yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Unanimous approval on that, thank you. Next up is item six B. Ordinance for A 25 Forest Lands Conversion Code Update. Dana Bowers, Associate Planner, to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Dana Bowers, Associate Planner with Community Planning and Economic Development. The item before you is Development Code Docket Item A 25, to amend the Forest Land Conversion Code ordinance or conversion ordinance and review tree protection standards. Staff are bringing it forward for you today for your consideration to adopt the revisions. Forest Land Conversion Code update has been on the official docket since 2022. The project includes revisions which align forestry code to current policy, current county policies, protects landmark and heritage trees, maintains flexibility for development, and adds provisions for adaptive management. The proposed update includes several changes to Thurston County code, including a repeal and replacement of Chapter 1725, amendments to sections of Titles 13, 14, 20, and 26, and the creation of a new chapter, 1727, for tree conservation. The planning commission held two work sessions followed by a public hearing in August 2023 prior to recommending approval by a vote of five to two in September 2023. The board previously held five briefings, two before, and three following a duly noticed public hearing on February 6th, 2024. Community engagement for this project was broad, early, ongoing, and involved meetings with 39 groups, including forestry professionals, conservation partners, environmental advocacy groups, and property developers. Staff was available and provided further information to community members upon request, and comments received on the current proposal have been cataloged for review during adaptive management. That concludes my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Dana?
Sure.
Josh Cummings.
Thank you. Joshua Cummings, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. We will both be available for questions, but I wanted to just add a couple of quick statements. CPED appreciates all the comments from various stakeholder groups. CPED has communicated all changes to all stakeholders. The Board of County Commissioners has directed staff to make sense of the public hearing. As has been relayed to the board during board briefings, this is one of the most, if not the most, innovative and protective tree ordinances in the state once it's once it's approved. It's innovative and new. New things can be difficult to implement, which is why the board-directed adaptive management is critical. I'll also add that, to be clear, CPED had not heard any opposition before the meeting and appreciates the robust stakeholder process. Understanding that it's finalized, change is hard, but the board direction helps to gather data to better understand the results of implementation and change accordingly. So just to clear, to be clear, we know this is going to be new. We know this is going to be potentially difficult, and that the adaptive management piece was added by the board, we think helps to find those paths forward that we can be successful. If there is something that we learn that is not helpful in terms of flexibility and protection, we'll bring that to the board as quickly as possible to make sure that you're aware of it. But I will say that at this moment in time, we don't know what we don't know. And so to not act because we don't know the things that we don't know and won't be able to learn those things if we don't act, from our perspective, we would like that opportunity to learn those things.
Josh, Commissioner Edwards.
We've got two comments that I'm aware of. One comes from the Conservation Committee of the Black Hills Audubon Society, Charlotte Persons, and the other came from Mr. Simons. And I'm just wondering, I don't know, did you hear? Did you see the letter from the Audubon? And did you hear the comment from Mr. Simmons?
Yep, we appreciate all those comments. I'm sorry.
And what my question is, can you bring changes to us which we can implement timely, like the next business meeting or something like that, so that we don't have to go through this big, long, drawn-out bureaucratic process of reaching today as the conclusion possibly? So so you said we have an adaptive management, maybe plan, something. I picked up on something like that. Does that mean that the adjustments that the master builders were concerned about could be changed by this body or the conservation folks?
So what I would say is that bureaucratic process that you relay, refer to, is the process that achieves the balance. And those two comments that you're referring to are in opposition to each other. So to move quickly on any one comment without due process, which would be information from the public to have the board make an informed decision, probably won't happen between the time that the comment is received or the time the information is gathered and the next board meeting, because we will have to follow proper process to ensure that all parties within our community have an opportunity to engage.
Okay, let's let's give it a month then, instead of a week. Is it possible to do within a month without?
Public noticing, public hearings, all of those processes.
So maybe six months?
Potentially.
Okay.
Again, we don't know what we don't know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions? Okay, I mean, we got questions. Is there a motion?
I would, oh. Okay, sorry. I would move to approve an ordinance repealing and replacing Thurston County Code, T C C Chapter 17.25, amending sections of T C C Titles 13, 14, 20, and 26, and creating T C C Chapter 17.27 to clarify forest conversion regulations, improve consistency with other county goals and policies, protect landmark and heritage trees, and incentivize general tree protection.
Is there a second?
One second.
Motion and a second to approve the ordinance, A 25 Forest Lands Conversion Code Update. Discussion on this motion?
Yes, sir.
I think, first, I want to thank staff for all the effort that they put into this. And I thought I was done last week, I think. But now we've got another couple of opposing views, so thank you for all your hard work, but I can't, I'm not very good at tolerating a bureaucratic process. So I'll just let it go at that, and we'll see where the vote goes. The democratic process may prevail, and if so, that's the way life works.
Commissioner.
Thank you. I would also like to thank staff on all the briefings that this this one took. I, when this one was first presented, right? And then having to come back to a hearing and then taken out, and then having more hearings, and then having sessions with individual commissioners, just all of that additional time, I'm really appreciative. I know you sat down with me and walked me through this process as well. And I know it took a lot of time. So where we're at now, I feel like it's not perfect, right? But it is, it gets us to where we need to be, updates. And I like the, you know, the adapt, how we can be adaptive with this program. And I think it's, it's just, we were all trying to think creatively and trying to see how we could really just have that balance, how we could have those tree protections, and also not a huge burden to property owners. And I think we have achieved that. We'll see as this process moves along. And so just very thankful for all of the work that this took and for all those stakeholders who provided input as well. Thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine stakeholders, different stakeholders, who provided input into this very long process.
Can I add one more thing?
Ah, yes, sir.
So I'd like to just add on to that appreciation of staff. The 39 stakeholders that came together, setting the policy aside, this is a huge win in terms of facilitation. All of these stakeholders, all of these organizations, Dana Bowers and the CPED Community Planning Team have done an amazing job at facilitating a difficult conversation. And that we're getting down to the nuances of a single word from the Black Hills Audubon comment and a maximum versus minimum from the O M B comments, I think from my perspective is a success. So whichever way the board would like to proceed today, know that my perspective is this is extremely positive, that our team and Board of County Commissioners was able to bring so many diverse groups together to create this, at least this amount of success thus far. So thank you again to the Board of County Commissioners. I know this has been difficult and complicated, and anything that's new is can be difficult, but it is innovative and appreciate your support.
Commissioner Fornier.
I echo all the things that have been done. I just want to, you know, say that it is, it's hard and it's scary. I mean, I'm a crime here in the Vanguard.
Commissioner Fornier, it's difficult to hear you.
Okay, then I'll just, I'll keep my comments to myself. And I appreciate it.
Okay. I would, go ahead, Commissioner Claus.
Well, just kind of to echo everyone else, I'll keep mine short because everyone is saying thank you, and I know this was a huge, heavy lift that took a lot of time. So my personal thank you is for you all to take a meeting with me and Commissioner Edwards last week to ensure that all of our final questions were answered and for working with all of the community groups to ensure that the information was disseminated across all groups and giving us what we needed to ensure that any loose ends were taken care of with any constituents that had concerns. So thank you for all of your work.
I would like to, I mean, I echo a lot of the comments here. I mean, there's that political adage that like when both sides are equally unhappy, you might have like struck, you know, a good balance. And this feels like maybe that kind of a policy. I'm not 100% sure this gets us to exactly the right place. Won't be a shock to anyone here to know that I kind of lean toward the tree protection side. I think one of the commenters who said the best available science is that preservation is more important than planting trees. So we have to think about that as we move forward. But as has been said, we can't really know where we should be until we get something on the ground. We try, we look at it, we 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 connect it up to our tree canopy study that's part of Phase Two of this whole project. And I think we can make the right adjustments. I think the the adjustments we made are fairly minor. The the final adjustments are fairly minor. My goal was to find something that did not disrupt, that dot disrupt the underlying structure of all the work that was done by staff and the 39 stakeholders. So I was looking for things where we could move the needle a little bit, a little bit closer to where I think we need to be without disrupting that that integrity, the integrity of that structure. So that's where I think we landed, and I think it's going to be a good starting point. And I'm proud to have something that's new, that we're going to look at carefully and that, you know, puts us in a kind of a unique position as we look at this, because this is an emerging issue across the world, the country, and definitely our region. Did you have more?
Yeah, just Commissioner Fornier said that what he was trying to relay is that you can never forego the good for the perfect. So those are his comments.
Okay. So with all of that, let, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. One abstention. Okay, so we have a four, zero, with one abstention, and this this motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Dana. Good work. Okay. Very good. Let's go on to Information Technology, item seven A. Replacement of Court's Audio-Visual Systems for District and Superior Courts. Sheri Ilg.
Thank you, Sheri Ilg, I T Director. I am seeking authorization to purchase replacement audio-visual equipment for 12 district and superior courtrooms. The total cost of this effort will be $1,476,200 and will be rolled out over the next five years. In 2022, the Administrative Office of the Courts provided grant funding to encourage Washington County courts to embrace available advanced technologies. The challenge was to design the courtroom of the future. Thurston County I T worked with our court administrators to design a successful solution, which received a 10 out of 10 from A O C. The courtroom of the future design will provide the archetype for the rest of Thurston County courtrooms. This new technology will increase access to justice for attorneys and participants by expanding on the requirements for hybrid hearings, as well as improved evidence viewing. The replacement solution involves no proprietary equipment and allows for significantly less complicated troubleshooting. I T collects for courtroom equipment. Replacement is part of our internal service rates, so the cost for this equipment will come from that collection. I can answer any other questions you have.
Is this equipment that we're replacing, did it reach the end of its life? Or did it fail us short of what our expectation might have been?
Probably a little bit of both. Some of the old equipment has been, has failed, and we are unable to replace it because it's no longer in production. So it's kind of a mixture.
So you sometimes, you have a situation where if if the fixes were being produced, you might have been able to extend the life.
Yes.
But when the company's not.
No longer supporting the old equipment.
Supporting that, then you're you're kind of stuck.
Yes.
And that's kind of where we're at with this, is what I.
Yes.
Okay, I understand. Okay, any other questions for Sheri? All right, is there a motion?
I would move to authorize the Director of Information Technology to purchase replacement courtroom technology equipment phased over five years in the amount of $1,343,000 plus 10% contingency for a combined total of $1,476,200.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to authorize replacement of courtroom technology. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Can I, Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just want to.
Sorry.
Tell my seatmates not to be afraid to make motions over there. I'm not the designated one to make them, so.
I'll help you. All right, so let's go on to item eight A. Public Health and Social Services, Michigan Public Health Institute Agreement. Gretchen Tolliver, Program Manager for Public Health, to brief the board. Good afternoon, Gretchen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Gretchen Tolliver. I'm the Community Wellness Division Director with Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. I am seeking approval of the subcontract agreement with the Michigan Public Health Institute for the total amount of $74,335 for the period of January 1st, 2024, through June 30th of 2024. This funding will expand the child fatality review work in Thurston County by allowing us to develop a community fetal infant mortality review team, receive additional trainings such as D E I bereavement and vicarious trauma trainings, implement a community bereavement support group, and provide safety items such as pack-and-place to community partners such as our first responders to help to distribute to families in need. I have opened any questions?
Questions on this item? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve subcontractor agreement number two, three, with the Michigan Public Health Institute for the amount of $74,335 for January 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2024, to enhance our child fatality review work in Thurston County and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve subcontractor agreement two through, no, just kidding. And is there any discussion on this motion? All right, if, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you.
Eight B is Amendment to Homeless Services Contract with Washington State Department of Commerce. Tom Webster, Senior Program Manager. Tom Webster, Senior Program Manager, to brief the board.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Tom Webster with Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. I'm here to ask for your approval to sign a contract amendment for the Department, Washington State Department of Commerce and five million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars for our current contract with the Department of Commerce to provide homeless services. This, uh, contract, current contract goes through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. We receive several sources of funds, um, under this contract including consolidated homeless grants, eviction prevention rent assistance, emergency housing funds, housing and essential needs, and a document recording the supplemental funding. Um, so this will add to what we can award to our community. We will back, be back to you in June to award this, these funds to, um, nonprofits in our community. But now we'd like to, to sign this contract with the Commerce. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Tom?
Might I point out that oftentimes on these, uh, complicated contracts, that sometimes we don't have questions because we've had plenty of time to go over this in other work sessions. So I'd hate to have the public think we didn't care because we didn't ask questions. We've already asked those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Amendment C to Contract Two, Four, Four, Six, One, Zero, Eight, Three, Two between Thurston County and the Washington State Department of Commerce for homeless services to add five million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven in funding for a total value of twenty-two million, one hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and sixty-nine cents and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the amendment and future amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Amendment C to this, uh, homeless services contract. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Carries. Okay. Last item for Public Health is setting a public hearing for the Program Year Twenty Twenty-Four HUD Annual Action Plan and Performance of Washington Department of Commerce CDBG Coronavirus Funds. Back to you Tom.
Thank you Commissioners. Um, so here to ask you to set a public hearing for June eighteenth. Um, and this is to take public comment on, on two different issues. One is our Twenty Twenty-Four HUD Annual Action Plan. This is an annual public hearing, um, to take public comment on funds we receive from the Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Community Development Lot Grant Program. These, um, the, the plan will be available, uh, tomorrow on the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention website. There's a thirty-day public comment period, um, and then we'll be taking, um, holding the public hearing on the eighteenth before we submit it to HUD for final approval. Projects submitted in that plan will be recommended through the Regional Housing Council for the Home Investment Partnership Program and the City of Tumwater for the Community Development Lot Grant Program. We're also taking public comment on funds we receive from the Department of Commerce under the CDBG Coronavirus Funding, um, that was spent on quarantine and isolation in food banks during the part of the pandemic. Commerce requires us that we have a public hearing on, um, to close out that project. So we've also committed a, um, we have a two-page report on our plan talking about how those funds were expended. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions on this item from Tom? Tom, is there a motion?
Okay, I'll.
Nope.
No. I'll move to set a public hearing for Tuesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at three thirty P M or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard at three thousand Pacific Avenue Southeast Room One Ten to receive and consider public comments, um, the Program Year Twenty Twenty-Four U S Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Annual Action Plan and the performance of the Washington State Department of Commerce CDBG Coronavirus Funds.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to set this public hearing. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up is three Public Works items on the amended agenda. Nine A, Contract Award for the Twenty Twenty-Four Chip Seal Project is first.
All right. Good afternoon Commissioners. On, uh, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, we received a total of three bids for this, uh, summer's chip seal project. And these bids were in response to a call for bids that we advertised in The Olympian and the Daily Journal of Commerce, um, was also posted on the Builder's Exchange website. Uh, the low bid came in from Do Little Construction of Snoqualmie, Washington in the amount of four million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty cents. We anticipate that we'll be able to complete sixty-five miles of chip seal work on this. That's another twenty to twenty-five miles compared to past chip seasons. Uh, so it's a good year for us as far as the total mileage. The cost of the project's going to be paid for out of the road fund. And the roads included on this summer's project are various arterials, collectors and local roadways. Uh, this year when, we're in the southwest quadrant of the county. Chip seal is a, consists of a layer of asphalt that goes down on the road and then aggregates embedded into that asphalt. This treatment extends the life cycle of the road by sealing minor cracks and prolongs the useful life of the paved road for up to ten years. And this project is in our Twenty Twenty-Four Public Works Budget. It's in the twenty-four to twenty-nine Transportation Improvement Program and is in alignment with the County Strategic Plan Initiative Eight, uh, Supporting Robust and Well-Maintained Infrastructure. You have any questions for me?
Questions on the chip seal? Hearing none? I'm ready for a motion.
I would move to award the contract for the Twenty Twenty-Four Chip Seal Project, CP number nine, eight, zero, two, four, to Do Little Construction LLC of Snoqualmie, Washington in the amount of four million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty cents. And authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope. Up to ten percent of the contract, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-three cents or an aggregate of four million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-three cents.
Motion's been made and seconded to award the contract for chip seal to Do Little Construction of Snoqualmie, Washington. Is there a discussion of this motion? All in favor, uh, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to, nine, nine B's been removed. So we're up to nine C, setting a public hearing to consider application of Pacific Harbors Council, B S A, for a non-exclusive franchise for water distribution system and sanitary sewer system in Thurston County Right of Way.
Thank you Commissioners. Craig Sisson, Real Estate Services Manager for Public Works. R C W thirty-six, fifty-five, zero, four, zero requires that a public hearing be held on franchise applications. Pacific Harbors Council, B S A, has applied for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, maintain a water distribution system and sanitary sewer system within Thurston County Right of Way, known as Summit Lake Road Northwest and Summit Lakeshore Road Northwest. The affected rightsway are within the legal boundaries of Thurston County, located in portions of Section Thirteen Township eighteen north, range four west. Pacific Harbor Council, B S A, provides water and sewer connections to its facilities at Camp Thunderbird. The project will install two new utility crossings within approximately eighty feet of county right of way, one crossing at Summit Lake Road Northwest for both water and sewer and one at Summit Lakeshore Road Northwest for water only. This project will allow the camp to consolidate eleven separate drain fields into one onsite system and allow future development of one new dining hall. In accordance with R C thirty-six, fifty-five, oh, four, oh, notice will be published twice in the official county newspaper and posted in three public places in the county seat. The non-exclusive franchise process for water system and sanitary system, sewer system is consistent with the county strategic plan and is in alignment with Initiative Six to proactively shape a strong, diverse economy that provides equitable access to opportunity. I don't have here for any questions.
Questions for Craig? Nope. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to set a public hearing on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at three thirty P M or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard in Room One Ten of the atrium, three thousand Pacific Avenue Southeast to consider the application of Pacific Harbors Council, B S A, for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate and maintain a water distribution system and sanitary sewer system within Thurston County Right of Way.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to set this public hearing for July sixteenth. I am, uh, any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. And you're here for the next one?
I'm here for the next.
All right. Thanks Craig. So that's three D. This is setting a public hearing to consider application of Cooper's Point Water Company for non-exclusive franchise for water distribution system.
Correct. Thank you. R C W thirty-six, fifty-five, zero, four, zero requires that a public hearing be held on franchise applications. Cooper's Point Water Company Incorporated has applied for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate and maintain a water distribution system within Thurston County Right of Way known as Cooper Point Road Northwest. The affected rightsway are within the legal boundaries of Thurston County, located in a portion of Section Ten Township North nineteen north, range two west. Cooper's Point Water Company, Inc. provides water connections to thirty-one privately owned lots on Cooper Point Road Northwest. The original water system was installed in nineteen forty-eight with two and a half inch galvanized pipe. The pipe, the project will replace the main water line for approximately eleven hundred feet with four-inch high-density polyethylene pipe. In accordance with R C W thirty-six, fifty-five, zero, four, zero, notice will be published twice in the official county newspaper and posted in three public places in the county seat. The non-exclusive franchise process for a water system is consistent with the county strategic plan and is in alignment with Initiative Six to proactively shape a strong, diverse economy that provides equitable access to opportunity. I'm here for any questions.
Questions? We've asked them already. Uh, is there a motion?
I would move to set a public hearing on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at three thirty P M or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard in Room One Ten of the atrium, three thousand Pacific Avenue Southeast to consider the application of the Cooper's Point Water Company, Incorporated, for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate and maintain a water distribution system within Thurston County Right of Way.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to set this public hearing on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four for the Cooper's Point Water Company, Non-Exclusive Franchise. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Craig.
Thank you.
All right. Finally, we will go to Commissioner Reports and Commissioner Klaus.
Okay. Um, well, before public works staff run out, since I missed it this morning, um, I wanted to start with just thanking you for all of your hard work. This week is National Public Works Week, which is really exciting for a lot of us. Um, and I just want to thank our dedicated public work staff for all of the hard work that you do in our community. You always show up enthusiastic and knowledgeable. If you watched this morning's meeting, I pretty much said the same thing, but I missed you before you were able to get out of the room, or before you got out of the room. So, yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for all your hard work and I look forward to attending the multitude of events that will be occurring, um, this week for public works. So that was my first item. I wanted to catch them before they ran out.
Commissioner Klaus advised us all wear orange, so.
Yeah, I reminded everybody that today was Wear Orange Day, so. Yeah. So, um, okay, I have a number of updates since our last meeting. So, let's see. I'll start with, um, on the eighth, I attended the ORCA meeting, Olympic Region Clean Air Alliance meeting. Um, the same day, we attended the Thurston County Chambers Annual Meeting and a Regional Housing Council meeting. Following that, on the tenth, I attended, um, the DIRT, uh, event. It's the Deschutes Estuary Restoration Team and that was really exciting. Thurston County being where I've lived my whole life, it's really exciting to see the progression, um, of that project and the removal of the dam, the efforts to remove the dam and build an estuary, um, downtown where we currently call it Capital Lake. Um, so that was really exciting. On the eleventh, I attended the A A P I celebration at the South Puget Sound Community College Lacy Campus. And following that, I attended the Pizza Clutch Gala downtown. Um, that was really exciting. Let's see, what else? Um, on the thirteenth, I attended the Joint Animal Service Commission meeting. And the fifteenth, I had a one-on-one meeting with our sheriff, um, some key takeaways from my meeting with him. Um, I was really excited to hear that we are well under our estimated expenditures for double, double overtime this year. And, um, particularly, and this was for corrections staff, but, um, I was excited to hear that our vacancies are down from thirty-two to twenty in corrections and that work release, um, is anticipated to return upon ten vacancies. So that's really exciting to hopefully be bringing back such an important program to our community here pretty soon. Um, I also wanted to highlight the new public facing dashboard on the Thurston County Sheriff's Office website, which includes data through year twenty twenty-three on the use of force. This dashboard is a pilot program and I'm hopeful that it will be successful. So I encourage the community to check that out if you have a chance. The goal according to our sheriff is to, in the future, include other forms of data around topics like the budget or pursuits happening in our county. So that was a good meeting. On the sixteenth, I attended the B H A S O meeting along with Commissioner Mahia. Let's see. Um, on the sixteenth, I also attended a meeting with CPED staff regarding the Forest Land Conversion Code update that passed today. Another thank you to CPED staff for taking the time to meet with me and Commissioner Edwards to answer our final questions on that. On the seventeenth, I attended, um, along with the county manager and our executive director of our Economic Development Council, the E D C Africa Trade Conference. I was really excited about that opportunity to build community and partnership with the African delegation who came out here for that event, as well as the opportunity for future conversations around economic partnerships with local and global entities. On the seventeenth, following that conference, I met with constituents regarding police accountability. I then attended the Resource Hub Brainstorm and had a meeting with budget staff that afternoon. And that's all I have.
Thank you Commissioner Klaus. Commissioner Fornier? Do you have anything you want to report?
I, I, I don't think I can do it effectively at this time.
Very good. No problem. Just giving you the opportunity. Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, mine will be shorter. Keep it short Sheriff. Everybody used to tell me back in the old days, so. Thurston County Annual Chamber Meeting was quite interesting. Some of the history of what Thurston County's been through. I attended the Sheriff's Office Awards and Promotion Ceremony. It's good to see we're finally getting some recruitment going. And the constituent contacts and issues were mainly around trees, land use, lakes, and animal issues. It was pretty busy about all of the above. So, thank you.
Commissioner Mahia?
Okay. I attended a lot of the same events that my seatmates have. The Chambers Annual Meeting, uh, the Regional Housing Council. Attended an all-day inner-city retreat, which I already gave. Attended our Appreciation, uh, Day and then, uh, Glacier Park Legal Women Voters Event, the A A N H P I Cultural Event. Attended the WASAC Lunch Meeting. Attended the Thurston Thrives Breakfast. Attended the WASAC Board of Directors as well as the WASAC Legislative Steering Committee. Attended the T N V H A S O Meeting. Attended Study, the Resource Hub Brainstorm, uh, Trial's Legacy, uh, event, recognition event and the D E S Work Group. Um, and I always post my schedule online for anyone interested to see what I'm up to on a weekly basis.
Okay. I have a lot of overlapping things. There was obviously Board of Health meeting. I attended the Lot Board Meeting, Sentencing Guideline Commission Meeting. On Commissioner Fornier's behalf, the Schreihlitz River Basin Flood Authority, I was able to participate in the election drawing of lots, uh, on filing day. The Thurston Thrives Elected Officials Council, um, the Chamber Annual Meeting, the, the Asian American Pacific Islander Prairie Appreciation Day. I also attended the DIRT event. I was at the Colvin Ranch Open House over the weekend. The League of Women Voters Lunch where Supreme Court Justice Hughes spoke. WASAC Board of Directors Meeting caught part of that. The Innovative Justice Meeting that happens monthly. Attended a webinar on the. Attended a webinar on the Medicaid Reentry Program and briefed the board on the requirements for that going forward. Prepare, Preparation Meetings for the Salmon Recovery Council Meeting, which will happen Thursday. And then Constituent Meetings, uh, with regard to aquaculture and land use issues, including some meetings with Olympia City Council members about issues of mutual concern on, um, urban growth area land use planning. So with all of that, I think we've come to the end of the agenda. If there's anything else for the good of the order?
No, sir.
Then we, we adjourned. Thank you.